I'd like to call the June 9th, 2016 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Walton?
Ms. Knudsen?
Here.
Mr. Pons?
Here.
Mayor Hallman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fryling?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
First order of business today are council minutes for the meetings of May 9th, May 12th, 2016, and the May 23rd, 2016 special meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve the meeting minutes for May 9th and May 12th, 2016, and the special meeting minutes for May 23rd, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Knudsen?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Hallman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Next order of business are matters of special privilege, and today we have several. And for the first one, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Paul Fryling.
And this indeed is a special privilege. Today, we have a resolution of commendation and appreciation for Mayor Clyde A. Hallman. Whereas, after a long and distinguished public career, Clyde A. Hallman will retire from City Council June 30, 2016, having served on City Council with great honor for 16 years, first elected in 2000, serving as Vice Mayor from 2006 to 2010, and Mayor of Williamsburg from 2010 to the present, and...
Whereas Clyde has led the city with a steady hand, always with an eye towards long-term success. He is a masterful collaborator, committed to strong connections and partnerships between the city government, our two prized institutions, the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation and the College William &amp; Mary, our local businesses, and the community, and...
And whereas Clyde's leadership helped steer the city through the 2007 to 2009 Great Recession, and during his tenure as the city received the AAA and AA1 bond rating, thus providing the cities of Williamsburg a remarkable level of physical stability, and...
Whereas, under Clyde's leadership tenure, the 9th Williamsburg James City County Elementary and 3rd Middle Schools were built, Riverside Doctor's Hospital opened its doors, the Williamsburg Arts District was created, the city successfully transitioned to a new city manager, the widening of Route I-64 was begun, and the Stryker Center was constructed as the new seat of Williamsburg's local government, and...
Whereas, several significant planning initiatives also occurred under Clyde's direction, such as the adoption of two comprehensive plans in 2006 and 2013, and zoning approvals for two major mixed-use projects in 2005, High Street and Quarter Path at Williamsburg, and...
Whereas Clyde has represented Williamsburg with distinction locally and regionally, serving and leading a multitude of boards to include the Williamsburg James City County School Board, Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board, Historic Triangle Collaborative, Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and Transportation Planning Organization, the Transportation Accountability Commission, the Military and Federal Facilities Alliance, and recently, the Golden Crescent Initiative for increased state education funding.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Williamsburg, on behalf of all of its citizens of Williamsburg, does hereby express its deep gratitude to Clyde Hallman's vision, leadership, and service. We are deeply grateful for his commitment to our beloved city and thankful that he will remain actively involved in the Williamsburg community.
And this resolution is signed by the four other members of City Council, and Mr. Collins is City Manager. Now, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, we'll graciously allow you to say a few words.
Thank you. It's, uh, I'm overwhelmed. But thank you, um, thank you all, and thank all of you that are here today. It's, uh, it really means a lot. Um, I think I can begin by saying what an honor and a privilege it's been for me to serve the City of Williamsburg and all the citizens of Williamsburg. I mean, how many people get an opportunity to serve in this way? And, again, it's been a privilege and an honor for me to do so, so thank you for that. Um, you know, Williamsburg's a very, very special community, and at its heart is a colonial village, but it's also a vibrant, modern, contemporary community, too. And, and we've been able to, to merge those two and make those two work together, and I think that's, that's important, and it's, uh, I think, you know, everyone in this community deserves credit for, for helping make that happen. Um, we're really fortunate here, I think, to have incredible community partners, uh, everything from the college to Colonial Williamsburg, to the Chamber and Tourism Alliance, to the businesses, to individual neighborhoods and individual citizens. The, the city's fortunate that we have partners to work with, and, and they make our job incredibly easy. Um, it's, it's a very long list, and I'm sorry, I can't mention all of those partners, but there are a lot. But ultimately, I think what's been most satisfying for me and most rewarding for me is the, uh, the people, the people that are involved, and that's everything from my colleagues on City Council, and we were talking earlier about, uh, I think, I've served with 11 other people on council over 16 years. That's not very many. Lots of communities have lots of turnovers on council. We've been fortunate to have some real stability on council, and that's, that's been important. Um, I think equally important are the city staff, the people who actually run the city and do the work for the city. I can't tell you how fortunate I feel to, to work with such a group of professionals up and down the line. I mean, for a community with 190 or so employees, um, they do an incredible amount of work, and, and I think the citizens of this community understand that and appreciate that. Um, we have incredible institutional leaders as well, both at the college and Colonial Williamsburg and other institutions throughout the city. But ultimately, it also comes down to a group of engaged citizens, and I think Williamsburg is incredibly fortunate to have citizens who care, who are willing to come out, you know, say their piece, uh, work collaboratively to make this a better place. And the joy for me is to think about all the people that I've worked with over the last 16 years, whether it's fellow council members, city staff, people from institutions and businesses across the city, uh, and, and citizens from every aspect of this community. Again, I, I thank you, I feel blessed and rewarded, uh, and, and, uh, I will, I will miss many aspects of this, but I'm also looking forward to a, a, a much, uh, to a rich life going forward. But thank you all very much for being here. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, we now have a resolution of commendation and appreciation for the Honorable Judith N. Knudsen. Whereas Judy Knudsen was first elected to the Williamsburg City Council in 2008 and reelected for another term in 2012, and has diligently and faithfully served the citizens of Williamsburg throughout her tenure, which will expire on June 30, 2016, and...
Whereas Judy decided not to seek reelection, stating her desire to have more time for travel and visiting children and grandchildren, and...
Whereas Judy has a passion for health and well-being of Williamsburg residents, both in her former role as Executive Director of Old Town Medical Center and as a member of City Council, and was a tireless advocate of services for both our very young and elderly population, and...
Whereas Judy's service on City Council has been characterized by her dedication to improving the quality of life issues by supporting both public and private programs that address the educational, emotional, physical, and social workforce needs of our citizens, and...
Whereas Judy faithfully served on numerous committees and boards, including President of the Williamsburg Area League of Women Voters, Chairman of the Williamsburg Board of Zoning Appeals, Member of the Williamsburg Planning Commission, Vice Chair of the Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Trustees, Board Member of the Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance, and Commissioner of the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board, and many more too numerous to mention. It is sufficient to note that she has a heart for community service, and...
Whereas she will always be remembered for her demonstrated support of and genuine kindness towards the City of Williamsburg's staff.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the citizens of Williamsburg, the City Council does hereby thank and commend the Honorable Judith Knudsen for public service of the highest order and extend best wishes for continued happiness dated this date, June 9th, 2016, and signed by the four members of council and the City Manager. Judy, congratulations.
One of the problems I've had with these four people for six years is that I'm always the last one to talk. And I'm expected to follow Clyde, and I'm tempted to say what I've often said is what he said, because what he said is exactly right. The, this has been, uh, these eight years have been just wonderful. This has been one of the better experiences of my life, working with City Council, and as Paul was reading, I've done one or two little things. But the combination of a wonderful group on City Council and a truly outstanding staff in the city, the, it's interesting, the council keeps getting thanked for all kinds of things that happened when we had almost nothing to do with it. It was the staff that did it. But it, it's a culture that has been truly wonderful to work with, and one of the things that happened, interestingly, recently, as, this building, as you know, is a little bit controversial, but we like it. And the architect was giving a tour to a group from another city, and the, the staff of the other city said, "We could never build a building like this for our council. It's too open. There's too much light. There are too many windows." And that's what the city is all about, a lot of light, a lot of windows, a lot of transparency. And that's been, it's been a really wonderful experience. And like Clyde, I'm gonna miss it, but I'm also looking forward to doing a few other things. So, thank you very much.
The next matter of special privilege is a resolution honoring Planning Director Reed T. Nestor on his retirement. Reed, would you meet me at the podium? Whereas, after a long and distinguished career, Reed T. Nestor will retire June 30th, 2016, having served the City of Williamsburg for over 30 years as Planning Director. And whereas during Reed's tenure, he updated four comprehensive plans, a total rewrite of zoning and subdivision ordinances. And whereas Reed has attended over 589 Planning Commission meetings in his tenure as Planning Director. And whereas he was instrumental in numerous studies, such as open space, municipal center, entrance corridor beautification, and downtown parking, to name a few. And whereas Reed's dedication to biking has resulted in the city obtaining a Bike Friendly Community designation, a regional bikeway plan with our two adjacent jurisdictions, numerous bike lanes, and recent new bike racks throughout the downtown and community. And whereas Reed has played a major part in two large-scale new development projects in the city at High Street and Quarter Path at Riverside, while maintaining the community of the character. And whereas Reed dedic, Reed's dedication and professionalism have, have earned him the utmost respect from City Council, Planning Commission, city management, citizens, and colleagues, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Williamsburg, on behalf of all the citizens of Williamsburg, hereby express its sincere gratitude for Reed Nestor's many years of leadership and service. We congratulate him upon his retirement and wish him many years of happiness. Now, be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Williamsburg recognizes the 3rd Wednesday of October during National Planning Month as bowtie day. This is a recognition of the efforts of Reed Nestor to promote good community planning and encourage his staff and residents to wear a bowtie to promote and support quality planning. This is dated today, June 9th, 2016, signed by the members of City Council and the City Manager. Reed, thank you.
What the mayor didn't tell you is, what rumor has it, is a short tie, meaning my bowtie, means a long meeting, and a long tie, regular tie, means a short meeting. So, you know, I may go on and on this afternoon. Thank you, Mayor and Council and Manager, for this recognition. This month marks the end of 43 years of my service as a public servant. And I say "public servant" because being a public servant is more than a job, it's a vocation. It's a way that I've been able to help my, to make my community a better place, but it hasn't been something that I've done by myself. It's, as the mayor said earlier, it is part of a team effort, and really, the team starts with the citizens of Williamsburg. It includes the City Council, our boards and commissions, the City Manager, a dedicated city staff of public servants, and we all work together to continue to make our community a better place every day. I have enjoyed the privilege of being a part of this for the past 30 years, and I'd like to give special recognition to the members of the Planning and Code's Compliance Department. I could not have done all that I've done over the years without your help, and I appreciate the support of City Council and the Planning Commission. That has helped make my job a lot easier over the years, and I'm looking forward to enjoying my retirement and, on a nice day like today, being out on my bicycle instead of being at a meeting. Thank you all very much.
We have one final, um, matter of special privilege, and that's our annual Williamsburg Business Appreciation Award. And this is the 2016 award sponsored by the Williamsburg Economic Development Authority. This year's winner, 2016 winner, is Taproot Hearth and Patio. And I believe Dave Koppinger might be here today. Why don't you come up here? Let me tell you a little bit, and then we'll present the award and, and give Dave a chance to say something. Taproot Hearth and Patio has been operating as retail location on Second Street since 1977. It has served as an anchor to the Second Street Corridor, helping foster its growth through steady performance and efforts to welcome new businesses to the area. Taproot has played an active role in supporting and enhancing the local economy for its nearly 40 years of existence. Its employees are well-respected and deeply satisfied with their work, evident by the smiles and enthusiasm exhibited throughout the business. Taproot got its start selling woodsores and has expanded to offer, its offerings tremendously since then. The store now offers gas logs and inserts, ceiling fans, outdoor furniture, gas grills, fire pits, hammocks, glass fireplace doors, and the list continues to grow. Not only does Taproot offer a wide range of products for sale and insulation, it also offers after-sales support to ensure that customers get the maximum enjoyment from these products. Perhaps what stands out most about Taproot is its unwavering commitment to truly putting its customers first. Taproot greets its visitors with warm smiles when they first walk through the door and does all that it can to ensure their experiences are exemplary. From conducting onsite design and installation consulting, to even working with manufacturers to source products not exhibited in the showroom, Taproot truly exhibits all that one would look for in a good customer service and further embodies all the businesses should aspire to in the Williamsburg business community and beyond. Accepting the award for Taproot is Dave Koppinger. Dave, thank you for all you and Taproot do for this community. We do have an award here, and then I'll let you say something. All right, this is a very nice council. Hold it.
Wow, this is, uh, truly an honor. I was abandoned by my parents on the doorstep of Williamsburg in the fall of 1969 as a freshman at the college. And since that time, I've, I've gotten my degree, I've been married, got married, raised a family, started a business, and though these years later, I, I, I can't look back with anything but a smile. My daily commute takes me from the west side of Williamsburg all the way to the east, and whether I drive my car or my bike, thank you, Reed, I can't help but stop and pinch myself in saying what a wonderful place this has been, and 47 years is just a flash in the pan. Thank you so much. It's a privilege to be part of Williamsburg, and I duly appreciate this honor. Thank you.
Before we begin our, our next agenda item, I'd also like to recognize Bill Carr, who's here today. He's just going off the economic, just, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Bill, thanks for, you and the EDA for carrying out this award for all that you do, and we appreciate your presence here today.
Thank you. Okay, um, in spite of Reed's, uh, short tie, we're gonna try to make this a short meeting. So, next is a public hearing. Uh, this is PCR 16 dash 004, a new subdivision ordinance, proposed ordinance 16 dash 12.
If, uh, if you would ask Carolyn Murphy, and she would tell you, and she may even tell you if you didn't ask her, that, uh, I've been talking about revising the subdivision ordinance for the 25 years that she's been working for the city. So, this being my last council meeting, I guess since this is included, uh, in the resolution you just presented me with, I guess I need to go through with this. Our current ordinance states from 1958, and, uh, it's been amended over the years to add preliminary plat, sidewalk, slope, and minor subdivision provisions, uh, but we still have the same basic ordinance. The proposed ordinance, uh, has a lot of similarities, but I'd point out that, that this, it's gonna be pretty transparent to Planning Commission Council, because it's really not so much policy-related as it is a technical document to make sure that subdivisions meet all the requirements that, uh, they need. The new ordinance will be administered by a subdivision administrator appointed by the City Manager. That replaces the current language of plat approving authority. We have similar provisions for minor subdivisions. You can do a minor subdivision which is administratively approved for not more than five lots. It's generally a property line adjustment or extinguishment, and these plats are typical minor subdivision plats. A preliminary plan will be required for more than 50 lots. That's the same in the current ordinance. It was originally 25 lots, which it should be, but we were preempted by the General Assembly, so it's, uh, more than 50 lots. Planning Commission holds a public hearing and makes a recommendation to council, and council approves a preliminary plan, but no public hearing is required, and this is really the master plan for the subdivision. One of the major preliminary plats that we've approved over the years has been the preliminary plat for the Quarter Path at Williamsburg development that you see on your screen. The next step is the development plan, and this is similar to the current ordinance. This is a fully engineered site plan. This is approved by Planning Commission with no public hearing. It's really the same process as we have for approving site plans. We're now requiring digital copies. And again, building on the Quarter Path at Williamsburg preliminary plat I showed you, this is the next step. This shows the location for the townhomes at Quarter Path, and this was the development plan. As you can see, there's a lot more detail, topography, utilities, and so forth. Then, after the development plan, comes the final plat. This is approved by the subdivision administrator because it just is the document that goes to record in the courthouse that conforms to the already-approved preliminary plat and development plan. And here, going down to that final step, this is the develop, the final plat for Phase 2A of the townhomes at Quarter Path. The new subdivision ordinance has design standards for the subdivision, street slots and blocks, storm drainage, fire protection, uh, land for parks and schools, preservation of natural features. Many of the details are different from the current ordinance, but we have the same intent, good quality design. Uh, we're, for example, some of the changes we made, instead of having specific street width and right-of-way width standards, we're referring the VDOT, to VDOT standards, which gives us more flexibility in reviewing plans. Since some of our more recent developments have had alleys, we're taking out the recommendation in our current plan that, uh, alleys are not recommended for subdivisions. And we're doing things like, instead of having provisions for storm drainage in the subdivision ordinance, we're just referring to the applicable section of the city code. We are putting in a new requirement for provision of street trees. We've generally gotten that done, but it's never been a specific part of the subdivision ordinance. All subdivisions are required to meet the Chesapeake Bay preservation requirements contained in the zoning ordinance, and that is referenced. And we have the similar requirements for constructing, construction and bonding that we have in our current ordinance. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request on May 18th. No one spoke at the public hearing. Planning Commission recommended to council by a six-o vote that the ordinance be approved, but with the addition of references to the architectural and archaeological review requirements that are in the zoning ordinance. That has been added to the ordinance that you have, and it's similar to the lang- That has been added to the ordinance that you have, and it's similar to the language we have in the site plan section of the zoning ordinance. So, to implement the Planning Commission's recommendation, council would need to approve proposed ordinance number 16-12.
Thank you very much, Reed. Let me come back to council for any questions before I open the public hearing.
Just one question, if I may. Mr. Nestor, can you talk briefly about the subdivision administrator? Is it, that would be a staff member?
That would, that would be a staff member. I'm the subdivision administrator now, so that would, the city manager would just need to designate the existing city staff person to be subdivision administrator.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to city council for discussion and action. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Nestor, Ms. Murphy, it's impressive that it only took 25 years to pull all of this together. I mean, it all just makes sense. It's updating a document, it clarifies some of the language. There's no reason why we shouldn't adopt this, but I do think it's a testament and a credit to Reed's dedication to his job, that he continues to work as hard as he does to the very last moment. And I just can't thank you enough, Reed, for everything.
Scott?
Thank you, Reed. I'd like to point out in your presentation on Monday that, other than QuarterPath, the lots where this would apply are fairly limited in the city. I think that where we are today and the quality of development we have is a testament to your dedication to your profession, so, thank you.
Doug?
The only thought I had, just to be sure that none of this changes any of the other Architectural Review Board processes and site plan reviews, so it's really just modernizing this document, so it's rather innocuous.
No, I think it's fine. I think we ought to call it the Reed-Nestor subdivision ordinance.
I think, my guess is that's how it's going to be referred to in the future. Reed, thank you very much. With that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve proposed ordinance 16-12.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Reed, again, thank you for this exclamation point on your career, so we appreciate that. Next agenda item is reports, first, monthly financial statements. Anything in particular? Mr. Collins?
I'd just like to point out that the EMS recovery fees, and I know that council and staff had gone to an outside consultant collection, and staff has been working diligently at approving their coding and the administrative side of that process, and you'll note that that revenue is up as a result of those efforts over the year. And as much as the rain may impact recreation attendance and operating, getting into the operating, or in visitation to the market, the one nice thing about rain, I try and put a positive spin to everything, is that we have plenty of water in our reservoir. And that means we are not buying excess capacity from Newport News, and therefore, we did not have to expend funds in the past fiscal year buying any reserve water from Newport News.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, department operating reports. Anything in particular?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank the Public Works Department once again. Our neighborhood has freshly paved streets, and it was a great process. It was easy. Everybody could get in and out without any problems, and it was really another testament to what a good staff we have.
I agree. I've heard from people from a number of neighborhoods and expressing their appreciation for the professionalism of the people doing the work and the speed with which it was done, so. Any other questions, comments? Next are city manager reports. We have three. The first is a supplemental appropriations and transfer for general fund and law enforcement block grant funds. This is proposed resolution 16-07.
I'll let Phil Serra, the finance director, handle that.
Bill, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Holman and members of council. Throughout the year, we operate and we receive grants for various purposes. They've never been budgeted, simply because we don't know what they are. But in June every year, we take these to you as an administrative procedure, rather than to bring them to you every month as we receive them. But right now, for fiscal year 2016, we have about $28,000 worth of grant money we've received in sales tax fund, the general fund, and the law enforcement block grant fund. And most of these are donations and grants for equipment and training. So, I won't go into specifics of these, simply because they are so small in amounts, but resolution 1607 appropriates these funds, and that's what we need to do at this point in time.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions? Take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve proposed resolution 16-07, a resolution amending the general fund, sales tax fund, and law enforcement block grant fund budgets for the city of Williamsburg, Virginia, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Jerry, call the roll, please.
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Next is the request of the occasion for the arts, for tourism promotion contingency funding for enhancement and expansion.
An occasion for the arts submitted an application requesting $25,000 from the city from the Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund. The application was submitted to the city manager's office, consistent with the adopted policy of council. An occasion for the arts is in its 43rd year. We look forward to its success this year, and they're seeking assistance in building the event capacity to enhance the event offerings and seek to expand the event, to develop it into a top 100 art show in the country. Growth of the event is sought in increasing the diversity and quality of the event, with the eventual goal to expand the event beyond a weekend event into a multi-day event. The $25,000 request is reported as one-time funding to make product enhancements in the 2016 show. Specifically, the request to the city is for an expansion of infrastructure, which would be include tents, staging, and security, to increase programming, including performing artists, and operational support, a consultant. The staff committee required in the policy reviewed the application versus the policy. The staff recommendation, as reported at your Monday work session, was to fund $10,000 of the $25,000 request, specifically for the consultant work. It was the staff's recommendation that the consultant would enable a capacity building within that event that would allow it to grow to its end goal. I do notice that Mr. Stuart Honenberger is here today. If you have any new or additional questions that have come up over the last couple of days, but he and staff are both at your.
Thank you. And again, we had a presentation and discussion of this at Monday's work session meeting. Let me turn to council for any thoughts, questions?
Sure. Mr. Collins, thank you for administering this process, working with staff, coming up with the recommendation. I certainly think that council should award the grant, the amount of, or should award the grant of $10,000. And I also wonder if we shouldn't consider a little bit more than the $10,000. I particularly like or appreciate the desire to bring in that consultant with a bit of professional expertise in the logistical side of the event. So, as Mr. Honenberger said on Monday, the board can really focus on the bigger picture items of growing the event, of going out and getting sponsorships, and doing the fundraising that will really help them succeed and create this longer-duration event, which becomes a more of a regional draw, and thereby, we all hope, bringing more people to our community to spend the night and fill our hotel rooms. I think the track record of an occasion for the arts is significant. They have been a valued partner in this community for 43 years. They weathered the storm last year and came up with a great recovery after a potentially difficult situation, and they were in a lose-lose position at that point, having to make that weather call early on, and I think they handled it tremendously. And from my limited perspective, I think it's an additional vote of confidence in their ability, and thanks for all that they've done over the past four-plus decades, to enrich our community, to add to the diversity that we all seek, and to create a place where people can come together downtown and enjoy the arts and enjoy each other. And so, it'd be my suggestion that council consider, I was thinking the number about 17,000, simply because that represents the full amount of the consultant, and it is a little over half the amount of the gap that they feel they may need to bridge in the coming years. So, I just put that out for my colleagues' consideration.
Thanks.
Scott?
I support this proposal for many of the same reasons as Paul. Particularly appreciative of Stuart stepping up and taking ownership of an existing event and doing his best to expand it and make it a, another great reason to visit Williamsburg and at a time when occupancy isn't at capacity. So, this event already has legs. It's long-established. It's, now's the opportunity to take it to the next level. I think the number Paul's proposed is very reasonable.
And again, would just repeat a lot of what they said. I was proposed, prepared to offer that we should do the full 25,000, but I think what the vice mayor suggested makes sense, and I'd be willing to accept that, but I'd also be willing to do 25,000 for many of the same reasons that you all have already discussed. I mean, this is, you know, one of the top events in Williamsburg that has been doing it on its own, so to speak. There's a lot of community partners that play a role in this, but I don't know that they've ever come to the city, certainly as long as I've paid attention, and asked for any financial contribution. And since we have this tourism grant fund, this is the right type of activity to try to expand, and if, I believe that if they believe that this is going to help them, then we should, we should put forth the money. And again, I would be prepared to do the full amount of their request, but be willing to do what was being proposed.
Remember, I mentioned that I'm the last one to talk all the time? What they said. Yes, this organization has changed significantly in the last few years, and I think it deserves the city's report and I, support, and I would go along with the 17,000.
I concur as well. I think this is the signature event for fall arts. I think taking it to the next level is critical, and again, they, this is consistent with the types of activities we've used this funding for, so I certainly will agree with the 17,000. And if you would like to make a motion to that, or?
I don't know. I mean, I'm not saying that's the right number. That's just the number I put out, so.
Well, but it seems to me that's the number that covers their full cost of the consultant, and I think, you know, we can do that to contribute toward their moving forward, but it also says, you as a group have to get out there and find the sponsorship and raise the money to do the rest of it. And I think that's a nice balance.
And I think they have the capacity to do that.
I do, too.
Because it's an established event.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that city council receive and discuss the application during the, received and discussed the application during June 6, 2016 work session, and approve a partial funding request of an occasion for the arts event for $17,000 from the Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund to support the hiring of an event consultant, consistent with the submitted application at the June 9, 2016 city council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Do it again. I hope you'll convey to your board our appreciation for all the work that went into this proposal and convey to them our support as you go forward, and we wish you great success. Next agenda item is city attorney reports. I believe we have none.
Monument sign.
Oh, monuments, I have crossed off already. Sorry. Didn't hurry to retire. We know where this is going, Carolyn. Excuse me, sorry.
Mayor Holman and members of council. Capitol Landing Mulch and Garden Center is proposing to construct a monument sign five feet behind the sidewalk on Capitol Landing Road right-of-way, as shown on the enclosed this slide. The Architectural Review Board approved the proposed sign design at their meeting in May. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the monument sign with the five conditions as noted in my memo, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any questions, comments? This is pretty straightforward. We do this quite often, so. Not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that city council approve the location of the proposed sign on the city right-of-way, subject to the five conditions recommended by staff.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Jerry, call the roll, please.
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Now, city attorney report.
I have nothing today.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to unfinished business.
There is one item of unfinished business, and that's pictures and receiving the resolutions in front of the dais, please.
Do you want to do that now? Or do we? Now, or wait till after the meeting?
Your preference?
Your preference, my ability to herd the cats and keep you from the public approaching, you might be limited after the meeting.
We promise to be good.
Yeah, we'll be good.
Okay.
I'll make sure Scott keeps us in line.
So, right after the meeting, if we could just have a couple of minutes to take some pictures, that would be great. And then you can worship them.
Thank you.
Any new business? That brings us to our final agenda item today, which is open forum. A time for anyone who wishes to address council on any issue to do so. If you wish to address council, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn, and a second. Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
One last time. Meeting adjourned.